I know, I know you see, hey, you only have the 3% over here. But 3%, we have a coran already. And we have our councilwoman, she's on the way. But we really don't want to have all your participants, all the audience come over here and waiting. I think we promised 4 o'clock. Right now it's already 4:10. So let's start the meeting right now. So, okay, really, good afternoon. I have to go with the script. Okay, welcome to our December 5th, 2020, 2024 city, special city council meeting. Okay, right now is 4:10 and the meeting is now in session. Okay, and today, okay, this afternoon, the invocation will be led by the Father Jude Ochad from St. Louis of France Catholic Church, and the Councilman Cantos will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. And after that, we have a national anthem, because today is a big day to do the change of government and the city council. So we have Emily Raya within the national anthem for us. All rise, please. Priest? Priest Jude, it's your cue. Okay, would you come up?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Father Jude Uche. If we can take a moment, just relax. If you breathe in and breathe out.
Yeah, go ahead.
Our God has different names in diverse cultures and religions. He remains the center of the universe. You are our creator and guide for the gift of life. We pray for all our political leaders. We pray for all public servants. May you, God, bless these people in the city government, the mayor's office, commissions, and all elected officials, and certainly those who put themselves in harm's way, the law enforcement, the firefighters, the EMC workers. We pray that they may experience health of mind and body, peace and zeal for all they do for our community. May all who are present today feel connected to our public servants and together join hands in advancing the progress, health, joy, and wealth of our community. May our future be strong and be bright with shared hope and commitment. May we give thanks to our God and guide and to everything that has made this day joyful and memorable. Amen.
Amen.
Good afternoon. Please place your right hand on your heart, face the flag, remove all hats, and follow my lead. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where wicked stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Not yet. Go ahead.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we've hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we've watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night That our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Have a seat, please. Assistant City Clerk, roll call, please. We have everybody.
We do.
Yeah, traffic is horrible.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilwoman Cantos.
Here.
Councilwoman Diaz.
Here.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu.
Yep.
Mayor Calderon Tabatabai.
Present.
Thank you.
All right, we will now move to oral communications. If anyone would like to address the council, please fill out an orange speaker card and submit it to the Assistant City Clerk. When you hear your name being called, please start lining up in the center row. The timer will start when you reach the podium. How many speakers do we have?
I have three, Mayor.
Fantastic. If you could call up the first speaker.
John Shoemaker, followed by Mario, followed by R. Robinson.
Well, it's nice to see that you made it. It's been a fun four years, being able to do the back and forth, you know, that sort of thing. The change is going to be interesting, and it's actually, to some regards, momentous, or really something that boggles the mind, that Lieutenant Governor is here to swear somebody in who fights every homeless initiative that's been brought forward in the city. Has, excuse me, I kind of, from time to time, lose my train of thought since I suffered a stroke, so forgive me a little bit after I was attacked. You know, that the homeless doesn't want anything to do with them, has run as, you know, you name the political party the person has been a member of, or claims to be, takes credit for things that never happened, those types of things. And, you know, when I look at this person who isn't crazy about what's the right, undocumented immigrants and things like that, but to forego all those positions and all those beliefs to swear somebody in, the only thing that might be more shocking is that when she's elected governor in 2026, if Donald Trump or J.D. Vance are there to swear her in, that would really be showing that she's changed positions. You know, I just find it, you know, amazing that politics, the bedfellows it will make, you know, that type of thing, that, you know, will go against certain things, or not paying attention to what goes on is even more amusing than amazing, you know, that sort of thing. So it's, it really is interesting to see those things happen, you know. You know, I wish you best, you know, in what you're doing. Obviously, he's got to take a selfie, you know, he thinks it's the coronation for Emperor Wu or King Tony, you know, that type of thing, instead of showing some grace, but that's not what would be expected. So I wish you well in what you do, you know, and see, you know, what continues to go on. Discovered one thing, and I'll give you credit for, even though we do have political differences, is that you never lost who you are, what you believed in and stood up for it. I mean, you know, like I said, Lieutenant Governor's here, you know, going to be praising a person who doesn't, is adamantly against the policies of our current governor, Governor Newsom, and was adamantly against the policies of our former district attorney, guess gone. So maybe this has brought people together in a way that was unexpected, but we'll see in their, in their campaign how well they reach across the aisle to bring those parties together, but this is a start. When you're here to honor somebody who is against everything you've stated in public life that you want, hey, that's a start. Thank you.
Mario, followed by R. Robinson.
I can see your eagerness, Tony, just sitting as you sat, so. Good afternoon, Mayor Tabatabai, members of the city council and staff. I'm here today with serious concerns regarding the scheduling intent of this special meeting, while this is an important event for our city. The way it was planned raises significant questions about fairness, transparency, and respect, not just for the public, but for our outgoing mayor. It is clear to me and many others in the community that this meeting was deliberately scheduled at 4:00 PM to make it difficult, if not impossible, for Mayor Tabatabai to attend on time. As a presiding officer of this council, the mayor did not call for this meeting and was not only informed of it after the fact, and was only informed of it after the fact. The mayor requested this meeting be moved to the usual 6:00 PM start time to accommodate his and his wife's work schedule. This reasonable request was denied. The timing feels calculated, as if the intent was to exclude Mayor Tabatabai from fully participating in this transition. Who ultimately made the decision to hold this meeting at 4:00 PM and why was the mayor's request denied? What message does this send to the residents of West Covina about the fairness of our leadership? Also want to address the legality of this meeting under the California Ralph and Brown Act, specifically Section 54956, 54952.2B. Special meetings can only be called by the presiding officer or three council members must provide written notice. If this meeting was not properly called, it raises the possibility of a Brown Act violation, which could render any actions taken here today illegal and void. Furthermore, Section 54952.2B prohibits the city manager from facilitating communication between council members in a way that creates a serial meeting outside the public's view. To the city manager, was this meeting called legally and can documentation be provided showing either the mayor's or three council members' written request for the meeting? Did the city manager play any role in contacting council members to coordinate this meeting? If so, was this done in accordance with the Brown Act? If these legal requirements were not met, it raises serious concerns about the validity of this meeting and the actions being taken here today. This rushed meeting, held at an unusual time and without the full participation of the outgoing mayor, feels disrespectful. To both Mayor Tabatabai and the residents of West Covina, the mayor has served this city with integrity and deserves a proper and dignified farewell. Instead, this process appeared designed to exclude him and minimize his contributions. This is not how we should transition leadership in a city that values fairness and respect. The decisions surrounding this meeting, its timing, scheduling, and lack of transparency cast a shadow over what should be a celebratory moment for our city. I urge the council to address these concerns directly, provide the necessary documentation to ensure compliance with the Brown Act, and reflect on the perception this meeting creates for the community. Leadership transition should unite us, not divide us further. Thank you for your time.
R. Robinson, followed by Jessica Shoemaker.
Hi, Bill. Well, you're, at least, the good, the good side is, at least you're going to get rid of me, so. Congratulations. Well, I have a big respect for the Brown Act and what was just said, so it would, you really need to reconsult your attorney to make sure the police, or somebody has to do some enforcement actions here tonight. The Brown Act is very important, but I'm digressing. Emily did a good job on the Star Spangled Banner, and a little history behind that, the War of 1812. The British just walked into DC and just took over with practically not even firing a shot. But at the same time, Baltimore, Baltimore held, and that song was written. So thanks to, you know, the military defending Baltimore and President, General Jackson, who later became President Jackson, New Orleans, you know, without, without Baltimore and New Orleans holding, the United States would look quite different. Maybe the western part of the country would be French-speaking or something. But, but anyway, I just thought Emily did a good job, and I'd like to second all the sentiments expressed in the opening prayer. It was a better-than-average job. I really respected what you had to say, and I second all those sentiments. I almost forgot what I came up here to talk about. I have a reputation as being one of the more confused residents of West Covina. A lot of people call me the village idiot, and there's something that I don't understand. I mean, I wonder why the council chambers were made available for this dicey meeting with a very short agenda. I mean, once the comments are over, I think this, this meeting's going to go pretty quick, a pretty short agenda, but the chambers are available for the public, but for the candidate forum that led up to the election, that led to the election result, which is going to be, there's going to be some oaths at this meeting, the council chambers weren't available for a West Covina, for the West Covina candidates. The citizens had to go, I don't know, there's a lady that should be here tonight, but she was so pissed off because she had to, in a week, organize a candidate forum on their own, no council chambers, no venue. So, you know, for a stupid guy like me, it's kind of hard to understand, and I wish, you know, I wonder why the council chambers weren't available for a candidate forum so the issues could be discussed before the residents at a reasonable hours? I mean, there's a lot of people that are on the freeway that can't come to this meeting, and if there was any important business, they'd miss out on it. So I'm running out of time, and I better shut up, but I had a few other things to say, but they probably weren't important anyway. Anyway, oh, there's a rumor going around, I don't even know whether it's true or false. So, you know, I already said I was confused, but there's a rumor that most of President Biden's cabinet never took the oath of office, and, and basically, if they never took the oath of office, you know, swearing on the Bible and doing whatever, they really didn't hold office, and they were exercising authority against all laws. I mean, if you don't take the oath, you're not, you don't have to abide by the oath because you didn't take it. So I've only got 12 seconds, and, and I'd like some people that know more than me to find out why the President Biden's cabinet never took the oath of office.
Thank you, Bill.
Jessica Shoemaker.
I still don't know why it is harder to be on this side than it was to sit on that side of the dais, but maybe someday I'll get over not liking to public speak. I did not plan to speak at this meeting, but after I heard how it was arranged and decided to come, I just wanted to say to the mayor, I've been in the position that you were in for the last four years, where basically you're beating your head against the wall, even when you agree on issues, as long as it's not done the way certain people want it, it doesn't get done, even if you have an idea that there's no common ground to be found if you veer just a little bit off of what a certain member of the council wanted. I've been, I was subjected to screaming matches in closed session, one-sided, but, you know, it is what it is. And so I want to say to you that I appreciate the fact that you said what you stood for when you ran for office, you were elected on that platform, and you stood by that platform. I got to know you a little bit better during this campaign process, especially as you and my father had conversations about where you could find common ground if you were to serve on the council together. So I wanted to let you know I appreciate that. And, you know, one of the reasons I also chose to speak is because my father is and has been my biggest supporter, and to watch him up here struggle to speak and lose his words, somebody who's never had a health issue, but was attacked, and anybody who says otherwise can just take care of themselves, and anybody who says they need to see video or whatever, grow up, get a life. There's a reason there's restraining order in place, and I hope it will stay in place. And, you know, I look at this council, we have one council member who was investigated because he allegedly threatened the city manager. We have another under an active restraining order. What is this city? What have we become? Where are the residents paying attention to who you're electing? It's sad. It's pathetic. It's made West Covina a laughingstock. You know, at one point, it would have been an honor to have the Lieutenant Governor here to swear in somebody to our council. Now, all I can think is, my God, that person obviously has not been informed on what's going on here, that the person she's here to swear in was in a company that is under investigation and has been under investigation for ties to drug cartels, in addition to things my dad already mentioned. So I say to the four of you that are still sitting here, and the one that will join you, remember who and what West Covina was. You all have been here in the city long enough to know when West Covina was the jewel of the San Gabriel Valley. We are not. I work in a career every day that I interact with politicians and people from all over the state. We are a joke. We are an embarrassment. And you can smirk at me, Tony, but it's a fact. It's the flat-out fact, and the people around the state who matter and know are the ones saying it, and people you don't know and will never know. But that's okay, because I don't know if the city attorney will remember my absolute joy when I lost the election and sat here for my last meeting. In fact, he had to, for the first time in my life, remind me of decorum and to calm myself a bit because I was so happy, and everything I've seen in the last four years has just reinforced it. I look at Covina and look at all the businesses and restaurants and building that's going on there and say, that all should be West Covina. Yet, we continue to focus on a health department that we will pay twice for if you ever get it off the ground. Do better. Mayor, is your family here yet? Are they going to be able to make it? Okay, in my last two seconds, everybody, the mayor's family could not be here because they were at work.
Thank you, Jessica.
So if somebody else wants to speak and thank him?
I have no further speaker cards, Mayor.
All right, city manager, would you respond to any public comment concerns? We can keep it light today.
I don't know that there's anything I need to respond to this evening, so I'll turn it back to you, Omir.
All right, we will move on to the consent calendar. Do I have a motion to approve consent calendar, item one?
So move.
Yes.
I'll second.
Thank you. I'm sorry, can I, thank you, we have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Wu and a second by Mayor Calderon. Councilwoman Cantos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Calderon Tabatabai?
Aye.
Item passes 5-0, Mayor.
All right, at this time, I'd like to pass the floor to Mayor Pro Tem Wu.
Thank you, and I think we should have, maybe the city, all the city council want to have a comment. If no comment, I'm going to basically present all the farewell gift to our, okay, exiting mayor. So anybody want to say something? We, I did speak last time, okay, on the last meeting. Anybody want to speak about, no? No?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I would, please. If this is the time to express thoughts to our mayor.
It's the time, because, okay, after that, we are going to down to the podium to basically present all the gift and the Tabatabai Way, the street name. So you want to say something, go ahead.
Yes, please. Thank you. I appreciate that. I wanted to publicly express my deepest appreciation to Mayor Calderon Tabatabai for his service, and I'm going to actually, normally, we sort of speak generally in terms of just in third person, but I'm going to speak directly to you, Brian, now. I wanted to tell you how much I have appreciated over the past two years getting to know you and getting to work in partnership with you wherever we could, and I also have appreciated your candor in the views that you've expressed, and we've found common cause on different fronts. I'm also appreciative to you for, just you as a person, where I didn't know you, just like it was, as was true with all of our council colleagues, I didn't know you prior to my joining this council, but having gotten to spend time with you and Selenia and Anthony and your parents and getting to be in your space, it has just been a genuine pleasure and joy to have gotten to know you and to really care about you and your family. We here on council, we're all here for whatever time we have, and I'm just so appreciative to you for your always standing up for what you believe in, and also for holding true for wanting to advance the vision of what those who voted for you brought you into office for. And I also think, Brian, that our partnership, even though we haven't had full agreement on specific issues, the fact is that we have had magnificent trust with one another, where I know that the things that you have said are the things that you believe in, and the same with me and reverse. And the thing is, I really admire you, and I appreciate you for your kindness, for the way that you care about people, and I just am grateful to you, and I wanted to be public in expressing my gratitude for having had the opportunity to serve alongside you and to have supported you in becoming mayor, and I'm grateful that you had that opportunity to serve the city, and for District One to be represented in the mayor's chair, and God bless you and your family, and warmest wishes to you with all that you do. Thank you.
Okay, and Councilwoman, Lady Lopez Viado?
Well, thank you, and thank you for everybody who's here today, but just wanted to say, Mayor Tabatabai, just wanted to thank you for your time during, you know, it's not easy running, you know, you spend time, money, you make a lot of sacrifices with family, friends, I mean, you did the time to be where you are at here, and you are a public servant, so during these times, you did serve. I know, just like you among all of us here, even with residents, everybody wants the best for West Covina. for West Covina. I know we had spoke, how we get there and the vision of that may be different, but we are all here for the same goals, and I just wanted to thank you for that time. I know we've had, we have our differences, I mean, sometimes we're at opposing ends, but, you know, of course, the goal is for that because you have your faith, your beliefs, we all, all of us here, everybody in this room has our own faith and beliefs, and there are residents that support, don't support, nothing's 100% here. But I just wanted to thank you. I know we had dinner, lunch with family, a lot of events together, and you were there. So thank you for the time and commitment that you have given to West Covina, and we appreciate that, and thank you for being a public servant during that time. And I guess now you don't have to deal with a lot of the other stuff, and we look forward to, you know, other things that may come and go. So thank you again.
And Mayor Tabatabai, you want to say something? You want, you prefer to sit over here or you want to standing over there? Which one you prefer?
That's a great question. I wasn't, you know...
You can, you can pick.
I'll go up front.
Okay.
As well. Not so formal.
Testing.
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 Okay. Yeah, he's a teacher, he's a coach, so give him a break. Just have the school over here. And quick, okay, and I know we are left and right, and that's why we have a better rating, because we have a drama and we have a debate between two of us all the time. But it's only the politics. Okay, I think privately, we kind of get along. Okay, I think we can face the public, everything, like we are united facing outside. But in a dial, we fighting the different belief, that you have your belief, I have mine, and then we have to debate, and then people have to choose which one they want. And that's what democracy is. But here, just like last meeting, I say I thank you for the four years. Over here, then we always have a back and forth, but most of the time, we are agree with most of the thing. I think this is the most important thing. Most of the people living, the traffic, the power hole, the paint, the graffiti, the homeless, we the same. Okay, and some other, okay, raise taxes, or, okay, the homeless, okay, halfway home or...
By the way, I never raised taxes.
We have a little bit difference over there, but I don't want to start the debate over here again. Okay, I want to say all the good thing, but I want to give you all the floor, okay, because four years together, okay, and you never know, after four years, you might come back, okay, and they run again, and this is just like this, okay, and you have a chance, and you get on, and you have a chance, you get off, okay, good and bad, we don't know, but now you have more time with your family, this and that. But I want to thank you for the four years, okay. Luckily, we didn't punch each other, but we debate, we civilized, but anyway, take over.
All right, well, thank you. I first want to thank the city staff for the past four years. I'm a resident, my family lives here, this is where we have our forever home, and all of you have dedicated your lives here. I think a lot of people forget that, you know, as council, we're part-time, our livelihoods are not made by being on this dais, but city staff is. They work every day, and they try to do the best for us, for the residents of West Covina. And their job is hard, because politics does impact their jobs. And sometimes, it isn't the great work that they do that causes them to not be able to continue, it's the politics. And hopefully, as we move forward, that can leave, and the staff can just continue to do the great work. So I want to start by thanking all of them. There's a couple staff members, not current staff, I don't want to put anyone on blast who's continuing to work for the city, but there's three folks I definitely did want to shout out. One who is still working for the city for a few more weeks, Chief Richard Bowell, our police chief. My four years and the meetings that I was able to have with you and talk with you and talk with you about public safety, talk with you about high school football, but just the give and take, I learned so much from you about what it means to be a police officer, what it means to try to protect the city, and really, the approaches to homelessness. I learned so much from you. So Chief Bowell, I think I, thank you. I always looked forward to those meetings, and as you're going into retirement, maybe we can get together, get on that chalkboard, talk a little football, because you know, I love to do that. To our other chief, our fire chief, Vince Capelli, you know, for four years, he was someone who's shown the community love. I go back, when I first started, it was COVID, and it was, it was that pandemic, and one of my first meetings was in January, and I remember chief coming to us and talking about what was happening, and our fire department, our police department, all of you were out there, putting yourselves in danger, right? You are frontline, and he spoke about the trauma he was seeing. He spoke about all the death, and he spoke about it with so much love and caring for the residents of West Covina, and that has always stuck to me. And when you talk about public servant, that's what you want from your directors, that's what you want from your chiefs. And so I know you're out there, thank you, under your leadership. First two females to join our fire department, and you are loved by the community. And finally, the person I probably spent the most time with, former city manager Dave Carmini, if you're out there listening, we had conversations, hours and hours of conversations, our one-on-ones. And again, when I first joined the council, I think we were really far apart in the way we viewed things and the way we viewed policies, the way we viewed the world, but you listened to me, you spoke to me and with love, and again, the caring you had for the community. And, you know, by the end of your time here, I really felt like we had a connection and a wonderful relationship, and so I really want to thank you. To Councilman Contos, Oli, I'll be a little informal with everybody, that's okay. Thank you. After you got elected, you asked me to lunch, we had a wonderful conversation during the controversy of the indigenous prayer. We talked to each other, I want to say it was a three or four-hour conversation. You listened, I listened, we created a wonderful relationship. Thank you. Thank you for the kindness you always show my family, my son Anthony, his school, just... If you haven't, well, all of you have met Oli, because Oli meets everybody, but Oli is someone, if you want a council member, you want someone to be an elected official, that's what an elected official should be like. And so you're doing a wonderful job. I know you'll continue, I just want to say how much I appreciate you. Letty, again, you kind of shared it, so I was like, oh, don't take it away, but you didn't share it all the way. So, again, during a really tough time, right, there was the stripping, possible stripping of my title as Mayor Pro Tem after, you know, a controversial event. It was a meeting, it was a harsh meeting, right? There was three hours of public comment. But afterwards, you and your husband reached out to my wife and I, you invited us to dinner, and you offered me kindness. And then when I got sworn in as mayor, it was another tough night. There are few people, I think, that didn't necessarily enjoy having me on the council. And there were some pretty harsh things said, you know, and it was hurtful to my family. But you, as I was walking back, you, the love you showed me, and people don't see it, right, because it's off to the side, but I will always appreciate that. That meant so much to me. Rosario, I know we've had our disagreements, but as I said, when I became the mayor, I've been able to see you and be around you when you've shown, again, so much caring. I mentioned when you, when it was your turn to receive the gavel, just the love you showed to the family that had just lost their son. I've seen you with your grandkids, and I've ate your cookies, and they are amazing. And so, again, I want to thank you. I might also shout out, just because I felt I wanted to, when I first got elected, there was an opening of a laser tag. So one of the first events, you know, ribbon-cutting, and Bill, you were there and you offered to take photos of myself and my son at that laser tag. You showed us kindness. And I know a lot of folks, if you've been paying attention to city council, I want to know that I also remember that. And so I wanted to make sure in public I could share that. Finally, Tony, you know, I'm looking at your lovely family, and I think when you want to judge a person, I think sometimes you just need to look at their family. And they love you, they're loving people, they've always been kind to me, and so it's been an experience. So, and, you know, people have been asking me, am I going to disappear? And Tony knows me well enough that I'll be on this dais, and there'll be issues that I will be fighting for, and I will be up here. To the residents of West Covina, thank you for allowing me to serve for four years, for... Wow, you know, the experiences I've been able to have, because you had faith in me and you elected me and you allowed me to be in spaces that I would have never dreamt of being in, and you allowed me to be your voice on issues, and I've made so many friendships, I see so many of you, that I would have never been able to know. And when you voted me into this space, and Brian, you're going to find it out, and hopefully you enjoy it as well, that this opens up a world to you. It opens up people, like just so much talented, lovely people. And I thank you, West Covina. I'm one of you, and I just can't put it into words. I want to say something to Brian. Brian, you know, enjoy tonight. Tonight's really your night and Mayor Pro Tem's night. Really enjoy it. You know, you're here with your loved ones, this is special, okay? And, you know, I know you're going to be up there and you're going to do what you think is right. And so, you know, good luck, and I hope, like I said, I hope tonight is everything you imagined it to be. To my family, I will share that with you guys when I get home. But I guess the last thing, because Anthony, Anthony's my son, 11-year-old, and so he'll get to watch this after, because I'll force him to. He's 11 years old, right now, he's playing Fortnite, he doesn't want to get on YouTube. But, you know, Anthony, so he hasn't heard this yet, so when my, when you're a mom's belly, it was the pinnacle of my career. I had just coached, and we won the league title first time in 32 years. I had been named Coach of the Year. I was like, man, life just cannot get better. I'm about to have a son, and I thought, I figured it out. I was getting invited by NFL coaches to these camps to coach quarterbacks, and I'm just like, wow, right? I mean, Tony, like, you know, I'm telling you, this was crazy, you know? And, and then, and then there was a nightmare. You know, Anthony, you were a year, you were a year old, and I was falsely accused of hating a kid, and probably the worst thing you could be accused of, right? And, you know, I was like, wow, right? Like, my world is over, because it didn't matter, right? It didn't matter that it was a lie, didn't matter that, you know, I'd be found innocent, because you know, once it's there, it doesn't matter. It's always, right? It's that scarlet letter you'll wear forever. But then the light came out, right? Because, and I'll shout out my parents here, one thing they always taught me is to treat people, to value people, to listen to people, to love people, and from that dark time, all those people that I had loved, they loved me back, they carried me. My school district carried me, where they identified me, chose me, allowed me to write the ethnic studies curriculum, which I'd been fighting for 20 years to have. My friends at Charter Oak hired me to be their offensive coordinator, went undefeated, won a league title. Anthony, you know, because you were the ball boy and you were bored as hell and couldn't wait for us to lose, and I was elected to this city council. Like, I'm telling you, when I was in that darkest days, no way could I imagine that I could end up here. And I did. And so Anthony, if you're listening, the story's not over, bud, right? We can always continue, and you don't know, right? You don't know what life has for you. So West Covina, thank you, thank all of you. This has been an honor of a lifetime, friends. And so, till next time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Great speech.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would, I thought you were going to give me timer, honestly. I was like, I was like, I'm up there, and he's like, hey, anyone have anything to say? No one has anything to say? I was like, oh, man, I'm just going to be...
Point the older, we need to cut him off, but no, 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 this is something I want you to have all the freedom to speak, but next time you come over, you only have five minutes. Overall communication.
He's lying, he's cutting it to three, I already know it.
Okay, maybe one. Okay, so anyway, or maybe 10, okay? So depend on how we feel, okay? But most important thing, thank you so much for your service, four years. It's experience to meet you, but I enjoying to work with you because drama, debating, two sides always, but I can guarantee, everybody have their independent thinking, everybody have their agenda, so we all want to kind of find a way to work together, but again, work together, try to improve our city, and I can tell the love you have to our city, but I wish you all the best, okay? And now you have more time with your family and the school and the focus, and you never know. know, 2026, 2028. Hey, if you still have a stomach for it, welcome back. So represent the great city of West Covina, I have you, so you can enjoy doing this and practice at home. Only the person served as a mayor can have this. I would have one of this back in 2020, so I don't know if they will give to me again after I end up my mayor.
You know you're going to make sure they give you another one.
No, 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 I think one's enough, I don't need another one. I think you don't need so many, my word's too many things.
Former Mayor Mike Toohey, isn't like the second one, like gold or plated or things like that? Where's Mayor Hereford? Mayor Hereford here.
He has 10, yeah. So they are like forever, they're like icon to our city. So anyway, another one, only for the person retire, okay? But I don't think you will retire right away, so this, you should say it's a tabai tabai way, W-A-Y, but it's okay, it's a tabai tabai drive. So anyway, again, be careful, yes. You want to hold it?
I'll hold it, because I have a drive. Ah, I get it.
You have a drive, not a way. Okay, but anyway, and we show the best, okay? Thank you so much, and I will miss our debate, okay? And drama will continue, no matter what politics is, but thank you so much again.
Oh, we do have legislative reps who have certificates for, yes. And right before that happens, I would just like to make a point of clarification that it was, that it was item number one, that was, a motion was made by Mayor Pro Tem Wu and a second by Mayor Calderon, and that item is a resolution number 2024-70, and that is declaring the results of the November 5th, 2024 general municipal election. Thank you. And if, I'll go ahead and call up Senator Rubio. We can clap.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you can hear me. I'm State Senator Susan Rubio, just wanted to come and recognize you. Public service is special, it is a privilege, and I think anyone that serves deserves respect. I represent 18 cities, and as I go to each and every city, you see mothers, you see fathers serving, and I've seen pregnant women, and so it really does take a lot from your personal life, your family, it's really a true sacrifice, and it's not easy, sometimes it's thankless, and you get to see some of the things that are being said, and, you know, that's sort of what the job requires, right? For us to listen, and the good and the bad times, and I think that you serve your community well, and I wanted to recognize you, and I know your family, and I've seen your son, Anthony, run around, in fact, he talked about the tag grand opening, I think we were shooting at each other and playing tag that one day. I did, I did. And so, you know, this is what, you know, like I said, I wanted to just make sure people understand that it's not easy to serve, and so my respects to you for wanting to serve to your wife, because I think people don't realize that they serve along with you. It's a seven-day-a-week job, it's evenings and weekends, and I've seen Anthony with you, your wife, and so again, thank you for your public service, and on behalf of the California State Senate, it is my honor to recognize you for the work, the dedication, for wanting to serve and put yourself out there, and for the last four years as council member and mayor, I do want to commend you, and here's a certificate, and thank you so very much for your service. Congratulations.
Hello, my name is Elena Robles, I'm here on behalf of Congresswoman Grace Napolitano. I was a field representative for the city of West Covina for a very short time, and then it was taken back from me, but no, no, I'm not upset about that at all. But, oh, I just dropped a little gift I have for you. Congresswoman did want me to come and honor you on your last day here. As you know, we are on our way out, too. We're, this is our last week in office, we're closing our offices, but the Congresswoman wanted me to come and congratulate you on all the work you did when you were here, and to honor you, so I brought a certificate on her behalf, and I wish you the best of luck, and she did want you to have one of her challenge coins, and not everybody has, but thank you for all you did, and congratulations, and I know you will continue to do great things.
Any more? You, okay, come.
Thank you for that introduction. Good evening, everyone, my name is Wendy Saavedra, and I'm here on behalf of Assemblywoman Rubio, here to recognize outgoing Mayor Brian Calderon Tabat Tabai for his service, and we have a token of recognition for him that reads, "On behalf of the California State Legislature and residents of the 48th Assembly District, thank you for your years of service to the city of West Covina, your efforts in shaping the future of our neighborhood during your 2020 to 2024 term on the West Covina City Council does not go unnoticed." Congratulations.
Any more? You sure? Going one? Going two? Mayor? Okay, so Assistant City Clerk, we're going to next agenda. Yeah, go ahead.
At this time, we will begin administering the oath of office to our newly elected officials. If I can please have Senator Susan Rubio and Councilmember-elect Brian Gutierrez to
Hello. So I'm sorry to disappoint, I am not the Lieutenant Governor. She's not here today, so I will be administering the oath of office. Congratulations, raise your right hand, please, and state after me. Say aye. Say aye.
Aye.
State your name.
He's a little shy, sorry. Okay, there we go.
State aye.
Aye.
Now state your name.
Brian Anthony Gutierrez.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of California.
The state of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will bear.
That I will bear.
True faith.
True faith.
And allegiance.
Allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of invasion.
And that I will well.
That I will well.
And faithfully.
And faithfully.
Discharge.
Discharge.
The duties.
The duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Say it again, that's good.
The duties.
The duties.
Upon which.
On which.
I am about to enter.
About what I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, you're now sworn in. And we do have recognition for, from the state of California, for Brian, and thank you so much. As I stated earlier, it is a privilege to serve, but not just to serve, and that is to really be responsive to your community and their needs, and we're all counting on you to do the right thing, to listen, and to make sure that we're respectful of all our community members and everyone on the dais, and with that, I would say, congratulations, and I applaud your commitment to our residents and your interest in improving our community, so congratulations, and we look forward to all the great things you're going to accomplish, so congratulations.
Jesse Gilgoff from Lieutenant Governor Kunalakis Office.
Also, sorry to disappoint, as I'm also not the Lieutenant Governor, but I'm her SoCal Director, proudly here with Brian today to honor a certificate. Can actually have you, maybe hold that down here. Okay, Lieutenant Governor, I'd like to congratulate you, Councilmember, on your historic election in West Covina, as the first council member in the city of West Covina and the San Gabriel Valley to be elected with autism. It's your historic win that is a testament of your dedication and resilience to the community that you are going to be continuing to serve. Lieutenant Governor recognizes that your journey stands as a beacon of hope, an inspiration, embodies a spirit of progress and inclusivity, and demonstrates that the impossible is always possible.
Wendy Saavedra from Blanca Rubio's office.
Again, good evening, everyone, my name is Wendy Saavedra, and I'm here on behalf of Assemblywoman Blanca Rubio, who certainly extends her best wishes and congratulations to Councilmember-elect Brian Gutierrez. It's an honor for us to be here and present him with this fabulous plaque on behalf of the California State Legislature and the California State Assembly, and it reads, "In recognition of becoming the first individual with autism elected to the West Covina City Council in the San Gabriel Valley, you represent an inspiring milestone for the autism community. I commend you for your determination and believing in yourself. Your tenacity demonstrates that you can achieve the impossible, therefore be it resolved by Assemblywoman Blanca Rubio herself. Councilmember Brian Gutierrez should be commended for his exemplary service to citizens of California and extended best wishes for his future endeavors. Signed today, December 5th, 2024."
Councilmember Gutierrez, I'd also like to provide you with your certificate of election.
Are you ready? Want to have a seat? Are we going to start arguing together? Councilmember Gutierrez, you are very popular.
Do we have any other legislative reps?
Do you have another one?
No. At this time, I would like to call Rosario Diaz to the front, Councilwoman Diaz, as well as Pastor Samuel Martinez and Mr. Bill Elliott.
Yes, okay. Can I get this to you?
Thank you. I think they brought their own Bible.
Okay. One moment. Yes. I got it.
Is that Bible?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. I think it's, it's okay. Yes. Okay.
Are we ready? Councilwoman Diaz, repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Rosario Diaz.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of California.
Of the state of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservations.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And I will well.
And faithfully.
And faithfully.
Discharge.
Discharge.
The duties upon which.
The duties upon which.
I'm about to enter.
I'm about to enter, so help me God.
Amen.
Amen.
Oh, okay. Very good. All right, wow. So official, okay? Bless you, I ask for permission to say a few short words. I am a pastor in this city, and I live in this city, this wonderful city. I just want to encourage all of you, if you're praying individuals, pray for these people daily, or whenever you think about it, okay? That's something that my wife and I like to do every, every single day. They need your help, and they need your assistance, and there's nothing better that you can do for them than to pray for them every day, so thank you very much, and God bless you all. And God bless West Covina.
Senator Susan Rubio.
Want to congratulate the Councilwoman. It's always great to come to West Covina, I want to thank all the council members behind me as well, because you're always very responsive to, at least, some of our community's needs in terms of when I ask, you know, issues, collaboration, you're always there. And as I mentioned before, it's so important that we figure out how to work together, because I think everyone wins when we collaborate, when we see each other as respectful human beings, and you've always been so gracious every time we talk, every time we wanted to discuss issues, you're always there, so I really want to say congratulations on this, you know, reelection, and I look forward to continuing the work, and continuing to have discussions, dialogue, and look forward to, let's see what you accomplish this next round, and you will forever be the millennial mayor, I don't think anybody could, oh, centennial, yeah, centennial, and that no one can take that away from you, and it's very special that you celebrated as a city 100 years, and you had...
And no one can take that away from you, and it's very special that you celebrated as a city 100 years, and you had the privilege of being at the forefront of that celebration. So on behalf of the California State Senate, it is my honor to recognize your reelection as a Councilmember to the city of West Covina. I applaud your commitment to our residents and interest in improving our communities. I look forward to, again, continuing that work and, you know, with the new Councilmember, Brian, and everyone else behind us. I hope that we continue to grow and really, you know, share with our community just so many good things that, that come by just having this discussion. So with respect and admiration, congratulations. Thank you.
Wendy Saavedra.
One more time. Hello, everyone, again, Wendy Saavedra here with the Office of Assemblywoman Blanca Rubio, who extends a heartfelt congratulations to Councilmember Rosario Diaz. Since she was elected in 2020, they've had great conversations, and so they look forward to the continued collaboration together. And certainly the constituents of the 48th Assembly District in the city of West Covina. So on behalf of the California State Legislature and the residents of the 48th Assembly District, it is an honor to recognize you for your leadership and advocacy for the city of West Covina. Thank you for your accomplishments and continued commitment to the well-being of our communities. Congratulations on this milestone and best wishes for future success. Thank you.
Do we have any other legislative reps? At this time, Councilwoman Diaz, I'd like to present you with your certificate of election. Also, at this time, I would like to invite a representative from Grace Napolitano's office, and she has a gift for our elected. So, Mr. Gutierrez, if you'd also like to come down.
What's for everybody, so? So, as, as you know, the Congresswoman will be retiring at the end of this year, but she did send a video, and you'll eventually watch it. But she wanted me to bring one of her roses from the Capitol as a gift to the city as a thank you for welcoming her to the 31st Congressional District and to your city. She is very humbled. Of course, our time went by too fast, and now we're, we're going to be leaving. Welcome, Councilmember Gutierrez, thank you for inviting us. But yes, this is for the city. I don't know if you want to raffle it amongst you, I'm not sure, but, but this is for all of you, and you will all get also a challenge coin from the Congresswoman. So thank you for welcoming us to your city and for allowing us to serve you. That would be nice.
Assistant City Clerk, the next item, please.
Thank you. Item number three is the reorganization of the mayor and mayor pro tem. Section 2-21 of the West Covina Municipal Code, recently amended through City Council Adoption of Ordinance Number 2523 on October 1, 2024, outlines the order of mayoral succession. Pursuant to Section 2-21 during election years, the City Council is required to reorganize and install one of its members as mayor and one as mayor pro tem at the meeting at which it declares the results of the general municipal election. Pursuant to Section 2-21, at the City Council meeting at which the City Council reorganizes, the current mayor pro tem succeeds to the position of mayor, and all other council members move up one position, such that the council members in the third position on the succession list moves into the mayor pro tem position. When there are two or more newly elected first-term council members, they are the highest, excuse me, they are added to the succession list in order based on who received the highest percentage of votes in their district at the election. If an incumbent council member is reelected during a regular election year, that council member maintains their position on the succession list. Following the November 2024 election, the order of succession is as follows. Tony Wu, Mayor. Leti Lopez Viado, Mayor Pro Tem. Ole Kontos, Councilmember. Rosario Diaz, Councilmember. Brian Gutierrez, Councilmember. Do we have any opposition? Hearing no opposition, we will now proceed with the swearing-in of our new mayor. If we can please have Mrs. Wu to come to the front and anyone else who is going to be present.
Okay, and this is my second time to be the mayor, okay? It's my honor to be here, but I'm going to have my wife to swear me in. Why? Because four years ago, I thanked everybody, but I forgot to thank my wife. For these four years, I have to sleep in the garage. So in that way, I'm going to have my wife swear me in, so she will never remember, she will always remember that she's in the front page. Without her, I won't have who I am today. So I want to thank my wife. So she's everything, the anchor of the family, and I want to introduce all my family. Would you please, all my kids, all my children coming up next to me? Yeah, come, come, come. Okay. So this, this is for me, right?
Yes.
Okay, so this, I have, this is all my children, okay? We are multicultural, but this is like our city, okay? We are all very diverse, but they are all my children. Jake, okay, come on, come on, come on, come on. Catherine, come on. So we have Jake, Yasmin, Serena, Catherine, Justin, Megan, okay? They're all my kids, okay? I'm very productive, so you know. Okay, so anyway, go ahead. I don't want to speak more, otherwise I will be in trouble. Okay, go ahead.
Right hand. Yeah. I.
I.
State your name.
Tony Wu.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemy.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties of.
Judge the duty.
Of Mayor of West Covina.
Of Mayor of West Covina.
Upon which I am about to enter.
About which I'm about to enter.
Okay. Upon which I am about to enter. Upon.
Upon.
Which.
Which.
I am about to enter.
And about to enter. See, I screwed at the end, okay? I was so good, I'm so smooth. Thank you.
You don't want to give her lip? One, one kiss, one more kiss? You say I need to brush my teeth. Thank you, Pam, thank you so much to come to support me, okay?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, at this time, we have a newly-elected City Council, and I want to give this chance so everybody can say something, and look forward to work together. This is your new City Council, this is your new, okay, government to basically how we represent taxpayers. We want to make sure we're going to work very hard for you and to make, continue to improve our city. But right now, I want to make sure everybody have a chance to speak, and I think the first person is newly-elected Councilmember Gutierrez. Go ahead.
Thank, thank you so much, thank you. Well, I am, I'm honored to be the Councilmember for the first district of the city of West Covina. I think the 3,995 voters who elected me to office, who believed in me, today shows that no matter where one person comes from in life, that a, that a child that was once abused, beaten and physically and mentally abused as a child, that went into the foster care system, a child who had autism can still rise to greatness and overcomes life's toughest challenges. I am honored to be that person today as becoming the first person in the city's history to be elected with autism and in the San Gabriel Valley. Together, we're going to make a change. We're going to make sure the residents of District 1 continue to have a voice in our community. And also, I would like to, before I continue, I would also like to recognize one of my high school teachers being in the audience today, Mrs. Nozot from Nogales High School. I'm a graduate of Nogales High School, so that's a real crowd of applause. Yes, so, yes, and, and, and I wrote a little, a little, where's my, where's my phone at? If I could find it. Where did I put my phone? I lost my phone. Back pocket. Okay.
Oh, you got it, okay.
There we go. Let's see. Okay. I am honored to be your Councilmember, and thank you to the 3,995 voters who elected me to this position. I promise you, the voter, my bosses, I will work with heart and passion to make our community safe and vibrant in District 1. On November 5, 2024, the voters of West Covina's District 1 spoke, and they said, "The men and women of law enforcement shall not be pushed to the side." The voters elected a Councilmember who will ensure the men and women of the West Covina Police Department have the resources they need to finally fight crime and make our community in District 1 safe again. The voters have spoken to ensure that our firefighters have a voice and to get the resources they need to better our community and beautify our public parks. And so my last statement again will be that I am extremely honored to be elected as the Councilmember for the first district. Thank you to the voters of West Covina for having a heart and the passion in believing in me. I promise you that I will always work with heart and passion in leading our community. And I also like to thank my dear friend, Senator Susan Rubio, for administering my oath today, and also my dear friend, Assemblywoman Blanca Rubio, and the Lieutenant Governor, Elani Kurunakis, for sending her representative today, as I know she really wanted to be here, but she couldn't be because of scheduling conflicts. And I will make sure that our community has a voice and that we continue to make a positive change in our community. And again, again, the impossible is always possible if you believe in yourself, no matter where you come from. It is possible. Thank you, and God bless, West Covina.
Thank you, Councilmember Gutierrez, okay? And we can, we can tell you, we are connected. So all the grant, we're on your shoulder now. West Covina needs a lot of grants for the police and fire, okay, for the community improvement. So hopefully, with your help, okay, with all this enforcement from you, I think we can achieve a lot of things. Thank you so much. And the next one, I want to invite Councilwoman Diaz to speak something.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. I'd like to begin by thanking you, thanking Mr., I mean, sorry, I'm sorry. I'd like to thank Pastor Martinez for doing me the honor of swearing me in tonight. When I was first elected, you promised that you would pray for me every day, and that meant a lot, a great deal to me. Your prayers, on my behalf, have been an advantage, the source of a great strength and inspiration, and supporting me in prayers is something I will never forget. I would also like to recognize our brand-new city councilman, Brian Gutierrez, who I know will do great things in District 1. Brian is a great friend and is dedicated and devoted to his city, and I believe the voters made the right choice. Congratulations, Brian. Do not underestimate him. I am thrilled to have been reelected, and we still have much important work to do. I pledge more hard work on behalf of District 3. And even if you didn't vote for me, I am here to represent you as well. I especially want to thank those who voted for me a second time. Your loyalty and continued support is humbling, and it means so much to me. I will continue doing what I have done for the past four years, meeting with constituents and personally answering your calls, your emails, and working hard to keep West Covina the place to start a business, raise a family, and own a home. I am ever grateful for the 4% increase in votes received over my 2020 election, and leading my closest competitor by 976 votes feels like a mandate, and it's very satisfying. Thank you for the confidence you placed in me. I was honored to serve as West Covina's Centennial Mayor, and I was, and I am very proud. This term begins my 38th year in public service. I am humbled by the 3,397 votes who checked the box next to my name. During my first term in office, we successfully increased the safety in our most dangerous four-way intersections where lives were lost. Through my leadership, the city has installed 105 solar-powered flashing stop signs, and public safety remains my permanent concern. I also led the way for the beautification of our center medians that had previously been dirt for 15 years. Those center medians have been vastly improved and beautified with plants, flowers, and trees, and remains a work in progress. I am very excited to see the crepe myrtles bloom this spring. I also want to thank Chief Richard Bowe. I also want to thank Chief Richard Bell, who is retiring later this month. He has some big shoes to fill, and I thank him for his decades of service to our city. And finally, I want to thank our stellar city staff for their remarkable work and my colleagues, and the city council for their unwavering support. Together, we will preserve this jewel of the San Gabriel Valley for generations to come. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Diaz, okay, and, and I can tell you went through a lot for these four years, but you're persistent and you work hard, okay, and a lot of people don't know you driving around, okay, and check each of small area, any of district, you went all the places, you want to make sure the beautification, your passion, a lot of people don't know how passionate you are and try to improve our city, and so the people have spoken, the voters basically give you overwhelmingly vote because they recognize your hard work, and we can see that flashing stop sign, we see Azusa, okay, Avenue, now we got install a beautiful life. For 40 years, I live in the city, this is the first time we see such a beautification, and we want to work on this, and for your push, and you deserve to get reelected again. So thank you so much, and we're going to work for, continue, and with your help, I think our city will look so beautiful and safe. And the next one, I want to invite Councilman Oli Cantos to say something, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to express my, my excitement about working with our, our council as, as we continue to be of service to the community. And a special congratulations to Councilman Brian Gutierrez, not only for his historic win, but also for his tireless energy in moving forward with what he wants to do for the city. And I'd like to also say that when looking at the real potential of what we all as a council have together, our collective synergy in working in team partnership is what will continue to build stronger and will enable us to rise to new levels of, of success. My congratulations also to my friend and colleague Rosario Diaz. It has been a joy to have worked with you for the past two years, to go on patrol with you, to be at events with you, and to spend a lot of social time with you as well. You are someone who is a leader, who works extraordinarily hard for this city. You have a great deal of heart, and you also just bring a lot of passion to, to your role here on council. I'm really excited for that opportunity, and so with the two of you here and with our, our council, I know that we are going to get much done as we look, look ahead to the future. And here we go, everybody, get ready for a ride that will be magnificent. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much, okay, Councilman Oli, okay, Cantos, okay, and again, your passion and you like sending email like non-stop 24/7, 24. It drive everybody nuts, but that is how we can kind of push to make things happen, but you are so dedicated. Thank you so much for your speech, and the last one, we want to have a councilwoman, okay, and Mayor Proten Lopez Viado, go ahead.
Thank you, biggest congratulations to the both of you. The people have spoken, whether you agree or disagree, the results are there. It's proven, it's set, so sometimes when they come here and attack us, or, you know, hit, hit us, or, you know, they should talk to the residents who voted for them, so, you know, I just wanted to say again, a big congratulations with Councilman Brian Gutierrez. For those that may or may not know, actually, when I first ran, we ran against each other, and so people may look at the failures, but this is just proven that your persistent, your commitment, and here, you know, continuing on is where you are today. You never gave up, and so because of that, that does mean a lot. You, you didn't give up no matter how many times, you know, you just kept going on, so that is a big congratulations. And throughout the time, I know we've met because when we ran against each other, so we had our, you know, maybe disagreements then, but we worked together. And he was our planning commissioner, and, you know, I was happy to appoint you. But the point that we, I don't know if, everybody knows, but he and I did the biggest toy giveaway in the whole San Gabriel Valley here in San, here in West Covina, and that was like over $100,000 and 100,000 of toys. It was just the longest line that went to other cities. And with his big help and the connections, and so like Mayor said, we are looking forward to all these connections to bring here in West Covina and make the city even grander and better, but I just do want to say a big congratulations. I am very proud of you, you have come a long way. I know we work together, I know you're gonna do amazing work, and, you know, I just want to say I'm proud of you, so thank you again, and congratulations to both.
Yeah, thank you, thank you so much, Mayor Proten Lopez Viado. I think you like an anchor, okay, and you get, we elected, we love, any people can challenge you because people all give up and nobody can beat, okay, and Letty, okay, so, so that's showing your power and your care and people love you. So for you to continue to help the city, and city blessing for your help. And but I think it's the most important thing, you can see five of us with all different background. And that's what West Covina is about. No matter who you are, what kind of background, if you work hard and prove to people, you have a chance to serve, to be the leader. We have a first blind person, okay, to be our city council, and one day he possibly be the mayor, okay, and we have a first artisan, okay, and we have a first Latina to be the mayor last year, to Centennial Mayor, and we have a first, okay, Filipino and Hispanic background Latina to be a mayor, and you will be mayor again next year, and myself, fresh out of Bo, Asian immigrant. So you can see you have all different background, and you all can serve to your resident, to prove, okay, yourself, and for people to vote for you, and you just have to prove it, okay? And I think we all here, sit over here, prove it, okay? I'm here already nine years, again, elected three times, and I remember the first time, 2015, I was running against with Brian Gutierrez, can you believe it? That time he already running, and he run again, 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 I don't know how many time, but finally you sit with us, and you still young, you're still in your, what, 30, 34? So you're the youngest, so since you are 20-something, you already start running. So I want to get this meeting over, so I'm not going to continue mumbling, okay, and it will take forever because people know I can talk forever. Okay, so here, I present, I prepare a very short statement, so I don't make any mistake and showing how we work together for this coming year. So, good afternoon, distinguished guests, city official, friend, family, and my fellow resident of West Covina. It is an honor and a privilege today as your mayor. I am deeply humbled by the trust you have placed in me, and I'm eager to serve the city that we all love. West Covina is more than a place, it's a community, a vibrant, diverse, and dynamic community that reflect the best of Southern California. From our thriving business to our family-friendly neighborhood, we are a city full of potential and pride. Today, as I take this oath, I renew my commitment to every resident of West Covina. I pledge to work tirelessly to ensure our city is safe, prosperous, and inclusive, and together, we will focus on, one, number one, economic development. We need job, we need job, we need a lot of jobs. Supporting local business, attracting new investment, and creating opportunity for growth. Second, public safety. Enhancing resource for our police, fire, and emergency service and health to entire, to ensure every resident feel secure and safe. Number three, community engagement. Listening to your voice, the resident's voice, addressing resident concern, and fostering an open and transparent government. Number four, quality of life, quality of life. Improving infrastructure, park, and beautification, okay, and work with a public service to make West Covina an even better place to live, work, and raise family. We want a lot of kid, okay, we want children. I know this work cannot be done alone. I'm committed to collaborate with the city council, my colleague, okay, and my city council, community leader, and all of you to achieve our shared vision for West Covina. Together, we will face challenge with a determination, and, but, we will celebrate the achievement with pride. As we look to the future, let us remember that our strength lay in our unity. We have to unite together by working together, respect our difference, and focusing on what unite us. We can achieve great thing. Last, I want to take this chance, the moment, to thank my family, all my family is over here, especially my wife, and we love her, even she doesn't want to give me a kiss, but I still love her, at least I can move back to the room, I don't even live in the garage. And friend for their unwavering support to my colleague and mentor who have guided me, and most importantly, to the resident of West Covina, thank you. And thank you so much to believe in me. I'm honored to serve as your mayor, even it's only one year, but it's 12 months, it's long enough. We need to make things happen, and excited to get to work on behalf of the wonderful city that we love. Together, we can ensure that West Covina continue to be a shining example of a community spirit, resilient, and opportunity. Thank you, and let's get started on this journey together. Thank you so much. And I, and I cannot emphasize more, okay, enough about let's work together. I know we have a lot of difference, we have people love, hate, disallow, but it's politics, but let's work together to improve our city, and that's why we sit over here willing to donate our time, work 120% to improve our city. So, any of common our city council want to say? Before I adjourn the meeting, and I want to say this, we have drink without alcohol, okay, and we drink, okay? And we have, I think we have cake, and we have a pork choke cake and a cookie. And I want to thank Filipino-American Association, okay, Hera over here, thank you so much, okay? And, okay, Noi Piz, Noi Piz, okay, Bar and Gria, they donate the, the delicious Filipino cuisine and for today's event, okay? You know, I don't know, okay, but I like the, I like the egg, okay, with the dark inside, okay, so.
Egg rolls.
Yeah, I forgot the name, but anyway, and this is something, thank you so much for the community put it together over here. And we have the Chinese-American Association over here, thank you so much, and they, they the, they the, they the group put a magnificent moon festival. We have led today 20,000 people with all diverse of a performance, and we have Ivy from the, for the Rico, okay, thank you so much. And the next meeting, we want to donate, I think CAWC told me they want to donate $1,000 to your group for you going to London, this is magnificent, okay? Well, again, again, you can see the community get togethers and pitching to help our use for our future, and this is something important, and we have, almost everybody's over here, we have, okay, my chiropractor is right there, okay, make sure my back, so I can, I can, you make sure I can sit, okay? Otherwise, he will give me a massage in the back. And we have Kaiser CEO right there, Eugene, okay, and, okay, I want to thank you for the partnership, okay? And we have, okay, my neighbors, okay, and a strong supporter over here, okay, with a lot of, my, my former HR, okay, and, okay, Sue Agino, okay, thank you for coming. And we have a lot of people over there, okay, my dance partner, Jean, okay? Every time when I go out, she will dance with me. We have no affair, my wife is over here, okay? We just dance, okay, let's say, okay, but, but she like to dance, she's a, she's a good dancer, okay? And then we have Ethan over there, and we have, we have Tom Okano, okay, our trial attorney over here. You better to win the lawsuit. So, and any people I miss.
And we, we have the, the former mayor of the city of Bell Gardens, Pedro Acituno, Acituno as well here. And, and I also, and I will also like to thank the Porto family, the Porto, Betty Porto, the Porto family. Actually, you'll see them upstairs, they're dipping Belgium chocolate with the city's logo on them, so they're custom limited edition West Covina cookies for today.
And the first lesson for you, Councilmember Gutierrez, if you want to speak, you have to raise your hand and say. You have to learn the first lesson, you say, "Excuse me, Mayor, can I say something?" And I say, "Hmm, no, wait," okay, so, I can do my poetry, but it's okay, I'm just saying, okay? You have, this is the first lesson, next time I could call you off, excuse me, attorney, shouting off. But anyway, and I think we have our West Covina house, okay, thank you, okay, showing up, and we have TransTech, okay, and Bill, Bill Garden, oh, Bill Garden. Mail Garden, okay, Sherry Fishers, okay, over there, thank you for coming. And did that, do we, did I miss anybody? Oh, we have our, okay, gas station, okay, mall, okay, over here. Who, Royal Coach, okay, our, where is he? Okay, right there, okay? Bill, thank you so much, did you donate any food? We have enough, we have enough, who, who else we missed, okay? Okay, thank you, and Edgy Family, and Mrs. Edgy over here, okay, and so sorry, okay, the loss, but, you know, we love him, if you let me know, we will do a German for him, okay? But he is such a nice gentleman, okay, and we all love him, but so, so sorry, the major lost, okay? If I know earlier, okay, the city will do something for you, but thank you for coming. And other than that, oh, the voice of West Covina, okay, and our DJ Phil. You, you want to say something? You have beautiful voice. Not today, okay? Oh, Planning Commission, Planning Commissioner, okay?
Oh, yeah.
Levitt, okay, Levitt right there, okay, yes, you are one of the best, okay? Planning Commissioner, really doing your great job. Who I miss, anybody, other than that? So, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.